Good morning. Welcome to the Lancaster County Commissioners Board Meeting for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. I am Chair Krista Yocum. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my far right Commissioner Roma Amundson. To my left Commissioner Rick Vest and to my far left Commissioner Matt Schulte. Will you please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, you may begin the announcements when you're ready.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one, the minutes. One A, approval of the minutes of the village meeting held on May 11th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item one B, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on March, uh, held on, excuse me, May 13th, excuse me, May 16th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting of May 16th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item two, claims. Two A, approval of the claims processed through May 23rd, 2023. And I'll note for Commissioners, there's an amendment to the payroll.
I would move approval of the claims processed through May 23rd, 2023 with the amendment to include payroll disbursements through May 17th, 2023.
Move approval. Or second. We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Two B, approval of a claim to the Indian Center Incorporated in the amount of $12,529.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claim to the Indian Center. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item two C, approval of a claim to the Mediation Center in the amount of $8,950.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item two D, approval of a claim to Rabble Mill in the amount of $3,906.56.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claim. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Abstain.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Brings us to item three, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will all be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. They are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. One, C-21-0711 with Genuine Parts Company doing business as Napa Auto Parts for aftermarket vehicle parts and supplies. Two, C-19-0579 with RSM US LLP to provide financial auditing services. Three, C-21-0344 with NMC Incorporated for electric generator and maintenance repairs. Four, C-22-0699 with JEO Consulting Group for on-call professional wetland delineation, permitting, and related tasks. Rightaway contracts with the following: Mark E. Smith II Revocable Trust, South 54th Street and Martell Road, in the amount of $1,327. Timothy J. Neely, North 176th Street and Rock Creek Road, in the amount of $1,365. Three, Dennis K. and Roseanne L. McLaren Revocable Trust, South 176th Street and Old Cheney Road, in the amount of $379. Agreements with the following for speaking services at the 2023 Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference. One, Victoria Chamberlain, in the amount not to exceed $1,500. And two, Timber Hudson, in the amount not to exceed $2,300.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item four is the public hearing for the Waverly Rural Fire Protection District conversion to a suburban fire protection district.
We will now open the public hearing for the Waverly Rural Fire Protection District. Those wishing to speak may come forward.
Please, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please sign in.
Good morning.
Morning. My name's Ryan Coonhearton and I'm here with Dick Damas. I'm an attorney for, with DeVork Law Group on behalf of the Waverly Rural Fire District. Dick is the president of the fire district. I know we were here last Thursday. Our goal is to convert the rural fire district to a suburban fire district. Then, once we get that accomplished, this is the final step. We've had a resolution passed by the district and then we had a vote of the residents. Now we have to come before the commission to get your approval to convert. After this, we would try to work with the city of Waverly to get them on board, create, bring them under the suburban boards or suburban districts' umbrella, and then have one unified fire operation for the city of Waverly and the rural, Waverly Rural Fire District. So, that'll answer any questions?
Well, I would just clarify one point, Ryan. This is the rural district's part of it. The city of Waverly still maintains their share of it. They'll make their own decisions, but this is a necessary step for us to take for the rural district.
That's correct. That's correct. So after this, after your vote, if it's approved, the rural district would become a suburban district, then we would approach the city to work with the city and the city would have to go through its process, presumably city council approval to, to join the now suburban board.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to clarify. This is two entities working together. Our part is here today, so.
Yes.
I just have one. What's the impetus? Like what, what causes the, hey, let's explore this new change right now?
Well, right now, we work, we actually, we actually contract through the city of Waverly to provide protection for the rural area. I think we've got, therefore, we've got five people through the city that are a funding source and we are also a funding source and it gets a little confusing. I think if we get it under one board, we can do a better job and actually utilize our dollars better also.
So it's not?
And make the process faster probably too.
So better, more efficient?
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a population, we hit a certain number or anything like that?
No, actually, your total evaluation between the city and rural is actually pretty close, so that, that really looks good too.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I guess we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to new business. Item five A, resolution in the matter of the Waverly Rural Fire Protection District conversion to a suburban fire protection district.
I would move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five B, resolution in the matter certifying the proper completion of County Bridge W-50 pursuant to the County Bridge Match Program Agreement.
Morning. Larry Legg of Lancaster County Engineering Department. This is a W-50 bridge we recently completed. It's southwest of Sprague. It was part of the County Bridge Match Program. This resolution and the agreement that goes with it allows us to certify we did it the way we were supposed to and then claim the remainder of the County Bridge Match Funds, which is about $60,000, so we can close this project out. Any questions?
I'll move approval of five B.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five C, resolution authorizing exchange of real property with the village of Davie near the intersection of First Street and Cedar Street, Davie, Lancaster County.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is the resolution which we talked a little bit about last Thursday about exchanging some property that Lancaster County currently owns and their shop sits on, and property in the park. It consists of .02 acres. The village of Davie is looking at building potentially a basketball court in this general area. Deeds will still have to be signed by you, the board, and also by the village before this becomes official.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I appreciate whoever it was, you or whomever it was, that worked through these details, because this is one of those situations where things work the way they should. Everybody's winning in this situation, and so thank you for that.
Pam gets a lot of the credit and also Mr. Ward, he did quite a bit of work on this, so he deserves some of that also.
Very good. Yeah. Well, I move approval.
Second.
Looking forward to Pickleball in Davie.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five D, resolution in the matter of extending the deadline for hearing protests regarding real property in Lancaster County from July 25th, 2023 to August 10th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five E, adoption of the 2023 Lancaster County Board of Equalization Policies and Procedures for Property Valuation Protests.
We've had a previous briefing with the clerk's office regarding this.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five F, appointment of LeSean Taru as Emergency Management Specialist at an annual salary of $58,864. Step four, effective June 1st, 2023.
Good morning. Excuse me, Jim David Saber, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. Gives me pleasure to introduce LeSean this morning as our incoming Emergency Management Specialist. Throughout the application and interview process, he certainly distinguished himself as a leading candidate, so I was pleased when he accepted the position and we're looking forward to his start date next week.
Excellent.
LeSean, I don't know if you wanted to introduce yourself?
Yeah, we'd love to meet you. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is LeSean Taruru and I'm very, thank you very much, Mr. David Saber, for giving me the opportunity for the position, and I'm willing to make my county, my county of birth and my city of birth, Lincoln, Nebraska, a safe and manageable place.
Thank you for joining us in that goal. We appreciate it.
Welcome to the team. It's very good to have you here this morning, sir. Thank you. I, Jim, thank you for staying on top of it and moving forward. I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five G, recommendation from purchasing agent and county engineering to award a contract to Bauer Underground Incorporated for Lancaster County broadband southeast, northeast, and northwest quadrants in the total amount of $7,087,767.36.
Good morning.
Good morning. Abby Eckhart, Chief Information Officer for Lancaster County and the City of Lincoln. This is the contract before you that would complete the remaining portion of our broadband system. As you know, we came to you a couple weeks ago and talked about, you know, this award that came in was slightly over that budget, but of course, it's something that, you know, we were still able to mitigate a lot of the labor and materials costs. So, team did a great job on this one, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Just really pleased with how everything has turned out. Yeah, you have a, you have a great team.
We have a wonderful team, and truthfully, things have gone great with our, with our group out in the field. Really pleased to see how things are coming along.
Yeah, you're really moving along. I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that we went out and met these Bauer Underground folks and impressive group of people, so I'm glad they were willing to take on the entire project. It was cool.
Well, there's benefits of having them do the entire project, right? So, for instance, we'll have one map of all of the locations of all of the conduit. There's a big benefit to that.
There's definitely some continuity in, in how they're approaching the project. We're approaching this one, you know, there's some, some benefits to the data collection that we have now that we really didn't have when we put in the city system back in 2017. All of those things help us do better at maintenance, just in being more accurate with our maintenance of the system, but also really just understanding what's, what's in the system at any given time and being able to do that a bit more efficiently without having ears and eyeballs out in the field all the time. So, definitely. Yeah. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. I mean, there's a lot of numbers in here. I'm just trying to find, so what is the, like, the completion date related to these other three quadrants? Final acceptance date?
So I don't know that this is the completed, or this is the final contract. This is just the, the bid award. Right? So we would have that final contract in the next presentation.
Oh, okay. So I'm just, so is like, is it, will that be in the next month? I don't know. I'm just trying to, I'm just curious.
I think it's, it's in our best benefit to move this along as fast as we can.
Okay.
Just because we're, we're really getting close to, we're getting close to being ready to start construction, so.
Sure.
In terms of labor mobilization.
I guess one other question I have, and this is just, maybe it's just a clarification. It says on the agenda, it's from the county engineering, you're here from IAS, Information Systems. I guess I'm just trying to figure out who, like, who's in charge of managing the contract if things get behind schedule. Is it, are you guys actually handling it or is it engineers? Is it some combination of the two?
So, as information services, our, we have an entire broadband team who manages the city system and we're asked by the county board to manage this project.
Okay.
Procedurally, this, I think what was presented today was whenever we recommend an award, although it came from the collaborative group of departments, this came specifically from purchasing.
Okay.
So the recommendation formally comes from purchasing.
Okay.
And wasn't, and the county engineer was on the, it was on the committee and voted for this, so.
Correct.
I just, I'm, and maybe, since, if this is just the purchasing recommendation, maybe when we come to the contract, I guess my concern is it's hard to have multiple bosses and do well.
Oh, okay.
And so, you know, having, who, who does, if Bauer is ahead of schedule or behind schedule, who's going to hold them accountable to that? I think, that's the only clarity I think would be very important. I appreciate the work that's being done there, and maybe it's already clear and it's just not clear on the agenda. I don't know.
I'm going to have Don Ferris wave to you.
Right, because the agenda is really just about the purchasing.
Yeah. I'm going to have Don Ferris wave to you. Don is our project manager for IAS managing our broadband systems. We're extremely lucky to have Don. He's done a lot of great work for us. So Don is, Don has an entire team that works for him that will be, you know, has been out in the field with the contractor. We work closely with JEO. I can't keep up with these guys. They spend just about every waking hour of the day working with our contractors, making sure things are moving along. Our procedure is if there are any substantive issues that we need to address with the contractors, we take those in through me. Don and I work together and then we work with both the stakeholders internally and the contractor to, to resolve those.
Okay. So it sounds like the answer is your department, specifically Don, will be working with Bauer once the contract's actually completed or assigned?
Yes, but as for the existing contracts, we, we have been doing that.
Right, right. Because we do have the existing contracts already in, in, in force.
Great. Thanks for that clarification.
Do you have anything to add, Don, since you're up?
My voice is a little hoarse, so I apologize for that, but yes, it's a joint effort for seeing that activities and work packages are met in a timely fashion. So JEO is involved, our office is involved, county's involved. It, it's a, you know, it's a variety of a team to, to make sure that those times and schedules are met.
And a great example of that collaboration, what collaboration it takes to get a project like this done.
No, there, there are hundreds of project controls that Don and his team manage, and we've actually stepped a couple people up on his team to be able to help with that, so. But of course, if there's ever any, anything that we can be doing better, if we want to do that, please let me know. I'm happy to talk. So, thank you all very much.
Thanks for arguing.
Congratulations, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to five H, recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineering to award a contract to JMN Construction LLC for the repair of County Bridge N-96 in a total amount of $198,269.
Morning again. Larry Legg, Lancaster County Engineering. This bridge is on Southwest 98th Street, just south of Denton Road. This is a deck and, and, I'm going to say curb repair project. What happens on our paved roads, we use salt to keep them clear so people can be safe in the wintertime, but, you know, that's a, causes problems with our bridge decks. We start having some spalling and stuff like that. This is repaired to get that repaired so we can keep this bridge in service.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five I, memorandum of understanding with WW Granger for facility MRO, industrial and building-related supplies and equipment. The cost for products and services to the county is not to exceed $25,000.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five J, contract with Van Dorn Valley Construction LLC to provide ARPA culvert maintenance, phase one. The cost to the county is not to exceed $606,437.25.
Hello again. This contract is the first phase of the ARPA culverts that we're using the, the ARPA funds for. Got a good price on it. We previously approved the award. You can see it's kind of in the, the eastern half of Lancaster County. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five K, contract with Bulldog Garage Doors to provide overhead door replacement services. The cost to the county is not to exceed $25,000.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention.
Excuse me, I've got a family member with a medical situation. Let me just make a phone call.
Hope everything's okay there.
Yeah, I hope so too.
We can go ahead and proceed?
Item five L, contract with Europe Refuse Services Incorporated to provide annual waste and recyclable collection for city-county PPC locations. The cost to the county is not to exceed $12,289.60.
Move approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, I guess.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Five M, agreement was three plus one for cash vest liquidity and treasury analysis. The cost to the county is $250 annually per $1 million of the county's most recently adopted general fund budget.
A move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday? Excuse me. Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Five N, we have a series of agreements to provide referee services and here valuation protests for the 2023, 2024, and 2025 tax years and transmit Lancaster County Board of Equalization all papers relating to such protests together with written findings and recommendations of the following individuals: Tyler Hawkins, Brett Hollingsworth, Don Killean, Jeremy Gill, Jim Shatauski, Joel Walker, Marilyn Tabor, Mickey Tuttle, Randall Wilcox, Ronald Wilk, Sally Webster, and Shayna Spreckling.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Brings us to item five O, work and financial, work and financial plan pursuant to the cooperative service agreements with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Service for the Wildlife Damage Management Program. The cost to the county is not to exceed $10,706.76.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item five P, an amendment terminating county contract C-20-0064 with operations veterans encouraging recovery effective June 30th, 2023. with operations veterans encouraging recovery effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Brings us to item six, which is the legislative update.
I believe we have any updates?
Item seven, public comment.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak during, on items relating to county business? Not on the agenda today? Seeing no one, proceed. Oh, okay. Please state your name for the.
Robert Borer, B O R E R, R O B E R T. I'd like to speak to the fundamental purpose of government. Remind you all. I believe you all took an oath of office to our constitution. That constitution starts out this way. All persons are by nature free and independent and have certain inherent and inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, and the right to keep and bear arms, the protection of self, family, friends, neighbors, property. And such rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof. Such rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof. I believe over the last three years, we saw rank infringement, a rank denial of our God-given rights. To secure these rights and the protection of property, governments are instituted among people deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. So that's Article One, Section One of our state constitution, which you all took an oath to. And I believe was egregiously violated over the last three years. And then I would like to turn to our founding principles as articulated in the Declaration of Independence, first two paragraphs. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal stations which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. And here are the causes. Well, here are the, first of all, let's, let's articulate the self-evident truths. We hold these truths to be self-evident. That all men are created equal. Not some men are created be serfs and servants and others created be kings and queens and oligarchs. Baird, whom is under your jurisdiction, had no more authority to tell us how to live our lives than we had to tell her. All men are created equal. They are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that again, to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. You are all here presumably by consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government shall become destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to secure their safety and happiness. Now, you have all been destructive of these ends. Your, your end is to secure our rights. You've all been destructive, you didn't protect, you destroyed. You shut down, you allowed businesses in, in, in your jurisdiction to be shut down. You deprived free men of the right to make a living and to make their own healthcare choices. You've been destructive to our elective franchise. You're funding a criminal enterprise over there in the election office with machi, with machines that are being used to count votes by a private company behind closed doors. Away from the prying eyes of watchful citizens, this is a crime. And you're all responsible for it. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else with, else wishing to speak on items relating to county business, but not on today's agenda?
I have some copies, do I give those to you or?
Please state your name.
Wayne Smith from Lincoln. Good morning. It is my understanding that you approved the funds for the election equipment for Lancaster County. I'm asking that you defund the election equipment because it is hackable and subject to manipulation. Anyone who doesn't believe there was election fraud in the last two elections either hasn't looked at the evidence or has ignored the evidence. We need to count the ballots on election day at the precinct level to have a secure election. Voting machines should not be used because they can't be verified and weren't verified prior to the twenty twenty election by a credentialed organization. The U S Election Assistance Commission had lost its certification earlier. There are advantages to hand counting. No equipment to test, maintain and secure, no equipment breakdowns. Human eyes look at each vote at, on each ballot. Ability to read voters' intentions when the mark is made outside the oval, such as an X or checkmark. Machines will kick those out and the ballots have to be copied by hand to be run through the machine again. Based on listening to several experts in cybersecurity, math, and statistics during the last several hearings in Nebraska, I'm convinced that the election machines are a major source of election fraud. These experts include Air Force Colonel Sean Smith, Dr. Douglas Frank, both of whom testified at the legislature hearings at our state Capitol, Dr. David Clements, Dr. Shiva, Army Captain Seth Kessel, and Larry Ortega. Colonel Sean Smith said at these hearings, "Election machine parts are sourced overseas with chain of custody problems. The machines are very complex. You would have to start with the design of the circuits, monitor the fabrication of the electronic components and circuits going into the machines, including controlling access to the components." "We have to go back to paper ballots counted at the precinct for a secured system." "We are using systems that can't be secured. Voter registration rolls should be locally controlled with no outside access. With local registration rolls connected to a centralized system with a two-way communication, you have a centralized voter registration system. Voter rolls should be rebuilt from the ground up. Stop, no excuse mail-ins." So those are comments all from Colonel Sean Smith. Dr. Douglas Frank said, "We have a record-keeping system that cannot be secured because they are hacked and change the registration rolls. In other words, change who is registered, change who has received a ballot, change who was sent a ballot, which basically gives control to the bad guys. Those not voting are the phantom voters. The rolls are dirty and need to be cleaned up. One county in Nebraska had a hundred and fourteen percent of those eligible to vote as registered. Of those registered voters, eighty percent voted. A high turnout in a county with dirty rolls is a bad sign. Before the election, they inflate the registration databases which create the phantom voters. During the election, the databases and machines are hacked and tracked to manipulate the votes and voters to regulate the county outcomes. After the election, they pair the last-minute voters' IDs with phantom voters and clean up the evidence by removing the phantom voters. The computer algorithms are deployed throughout the process. If you want to see evidence, if you want to see evidence, go to any voter, excuse me, anyvoterap.org and listen to Larry Ortega's presentation. Or visit Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project on Rumble and listen to many of the videos. Thank you very much."
Hi, my name is Connie Rankie. And I've been here before in January. I also dropped off a year ago thirty-nine affidavits. We had knocked on doors and found very irregular activities going on in our elections. I brought those forward to Deb Shore. I don't know what happened, but it wasn't taken into account that I know of. I also took the thirty-nine affidavits to the sheriff. I took it to Lancaster County, to the election commissioner, and nothing has been done. We are very upset that nothing is being done about our elections. And it seems that the government officials just don't want to deal with it. And this has to come out. We have to investigate our elections. We found people that received three or four ballots, actual ballots in the mail. That is maladministration or someone is, is putting ballots into our elections and sending those to people. We found individuals that said they mailed in ballots and they're not recorded. It's like they disappeared. And then we found individuals that, there were people that didn't live in their household. There, there, you know, ten people that don't live in their household, they're still on the voter roll. And that, that fact allows these hackers, I mean, we believe that Target gets hacked. We believe that the Department of Defense gets hacked when it, when it, when it's shown or revealed in the news. But we don't believe that our country, one of the strongest countries in the United States, there wouldn't be hackers trying to get in and subvert our elections. This isn't just happening at the highest levels of government. The attack is on us. It's on every individual in the United States. And they do that through the counties, through our county elections. This, this canvassing or knocking on doors that we did, it shows the result of manipulation in the computers. It shows that there's some major, major, major problems. And when we ask for reports about the election, they say, no, you can't, you can't have that. Is there an outside audit of our Lancaster County elections? No. They're audited inside the county. That's like a bank auditing their own elections. And this doesn't work for us. We need accountability. And I, I came pleasantly forward last time, but we are upset about this. Something has to be done. And so I'm asking you, because I've already asked for a cast vote record. This is something that doesn't have individuals' names on it. It's line by line voter number one, who they voted for president, who they voted for senator, who they voted for county commissioner. It's line by line voter two, voter three. I'm asking you to get from the Lancaster Election Commissioner the cast vote record. These records have been obtained, over four hundred of them across the United States. But we can't get any of them in Nebraska, in any county. They're being refused. This record actually has shown in eighty-five percent of the cases a, a, a voting pattern that is controlled to a certain point. It's unnatural. It's like not random voters. It's like the most, the fraudulent candidate gets the most votes at the beginning and then in order all the way down. And this is a ratio that's used. So we believe a ratio is being used in our election machines. One vote is not one vote, it's one point two five or one point five value. We can't have this.
That is your time.
I'm asking for that report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a handout. Handouts.
You could leave those with the clerk.
Okay.
And they'll be distributed to us, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you just fine, you please state your name.
I'm Roxy Rose, and I just have to tell you, I'm old school. It used to be, I was on the election commission in Adams County. And I was, I counted votes. We counted them by hand, that was before all of this garbage came in. And, and we had the results by that night. The only thing that bothered me was it was in the armory and I couldn't leave until it was done. And I'm a little claustrophobic, but anyway, that was wonderful. So it can be done, it was paper ballots, we counted them by hand, and it was all aboveboard and honest. And I am just begging everyone in this country that can to get rid of those voting machines. They are so fraudulent and they can flip the vote at, at a whim. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but it's really, really bad. And I'm so proud to be an American. I was, I couldn't wait to be old enough to vote and serve on the election commission and just be involved. But it's really, really, we've become like a third world country in this respect. So I do ask that you would please get rid of the voting machines. Some places have, and it has made a big difference. Thank you so much.
Could I ask you to repeat your name, ma'am, I missed it?
Huh?
Could I, could I ask you to repeat your name because?
Roxy Rose.
R O.
R O X I E.
Thank you.
Rose, uh huh. Okay, proud to be an American. I've always been so thankful that we had the right to vote. And people in other countries and even here used to have died trying to get that privilege. And then we let these usurpers come in and rob us. So it's a very serious matter, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name is Peggy Sismanic, it's C I C M A N E C. I've been here to speak before and I believe that not a lot's being done. I don't feel any better about our twenty twenty-three election than I felt about our twenty twenty election. So after listening to the other people that just spoke on election integrity, I feel that at this point in time, everybody is being asked to do their part. And so I think that also includes you. And it, it's whatever that may be, whatever your part is. I believe that a lot of people are being asked to step out of their comfort zone. I stepped out of my comfort zone. I was one of these complacent people that didn't really take politics too seriously up until about three or four years ago. And, and then I got mad. And I guess we haven't gotten mad enough or something because it seems like, especially in Nebraska where I live, nothing is being done. Recently, I heard a person speak, his name is Ricardo Bozzi, he's from Australia. He is former military and he's been trying to rally the people of Australia. And I really liked something that he said. He was telling people they need to get up off the couch and do something. He was telling people they need to get up off the couch and do something. But this is how he put it. "When is the last time that you did something for the first time?" I'll repeat that. "When is the last time that you did something for the first time?" Doesn't just apply to you, it applies to everybody here. So when is the last time that you did something that you felt strongly enough about that you thought, "I need to get out and do that," and you thought, "Oh, I never did that before"? Well, that's what we're being asked to do. Before the 2020 election, my political endeavors probably could be narrowed down to one thing: voting. And even that I wasn't so great at, because I, a lot of times, didn't even know who I was voting for or very much about them. I just, you know, would ask people, "Who should I vote for?", and, you know, would go vote. But since then, and since 2020, and I was very disturbed by the 2020 election, so I decided I needed to do something, get up off the couch. So I joined a group that was interested in not only local politics but national politics. Then I joined the Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project, and I actually went out and canvassed. And we found, every day that we went out and canvassed, we found people that there were problems with our voter rolls. So number one, we have dirty voter rolls that need to be cleaned up. Then I decided to canvass for LCRP as a neighborhood captain. And since nobody took... I was going to take just my neighborhood, but nobody took the rest of my precinct. So I canvassed the whole precinct, which is about 300 houses. And I found there's a lot of people out there that feel just like I do. And a lot of people are mad, but they become complacent, like, "Well, why should I vote? Because it doesn't do any good, because I believe our vote is being stolen." Because that's what your vote is. It's your voice. If my voice is being stolen, why should I go vote? Because my voice doesn't count. I became a poll worker. I testified before the legislature. I spoke at a committee, at a commissioners' meeting in January. I became a delegate. All those things were things I did for the first time. Were they hard? Yes. But in order to do that, I also felt like I needed to educate myself, as I'm sure you have to do on a weekly basis with all these things that you're being asked to vote on. You have to know a little bit about it. So go to a website and find out what Dr. Douglas Frank has to say about our election, or Colonel Sean Smith, or Professor David Clements, or Larry Ortega, any of these people, much smarter than I am. In closing, I want to leave you with a mental picture. I think whoever designed this room made a mistake. Because actually, we the people should be up on a platform up here, looking down on you, because you work for us. And by the layout of this room, it doesn't feel that way. But that is the way it is. And we're glad that you work for us, but you need to start looking into this. We're a critical mass.
That was your time. But I do have one question.
I realize that it was.
An acronym, LCRP. Could you tell us what that is?
The Lancaster County Republican Party.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Former Senator Hanson. You're now in city government.
County, county government.
Term limit. Yeah, county, excuse me, county government. That's true.
And you are?
Amber.
Your last name?
Last name Parker, P-A-R-K-E-R. I believe this is my first Board of Commissioners meeting here for this county, I believe. Wow. Before some of you were here, I don't remember, but Board Commissioner Flower Day, I've seen you, the meetings when they were shut down during COVID and stuff, and I watch things. But I have to say, I'm disappointed. And where I stand right now, there is no excuses. Because right now, in every county, in Board of Commissioners meeting in the state of Nebraska, you have a job to hold our Secretary of State responsible. And when he's not doing his job, you have no excuse not to do your job. And that's what I'm here for you. So if you guys are looking for clarification of what we're looking for in resolutions, and this isn't just us or political parties, this is talking about the constitutional republic and maintaining it as such. Because when we the people lose our votes, we've lost our country. It was a deception-making it about President Donald John Trump. And those who worked on it in media outlets from the national level, even to our local news, shut out what was going on with what is taking place with voting machines. I want to focus here in the state of Nebraska. And right now, I want to bring before you, this was one of, I believe, if it was information to you. This is one of the affidavits pertaining to Lancaster County. Prior to the 2020 election, we received three ballots for Lindsey F. at our address. Lindsey is a daughter but has not lived at this address for more than 15 years. Additionally, Lindsey's name changed to Lindsey S. Lindsey was 16 years of age when she last resided at our address and was never a registered voter while living at this address. When we contacted Lindsey, she said at no time did she request a mail-in ballot. She further stated that she is a registered voter, Democrat, but has never been registered at our address. She also stated that she did not vote in the 2020 election. This was Shore, Deb Shore, who is no longer in the seat that she was in. This information was some of what was dropped off to her to be passed out to you guys. And my question is, what did you do? Did you look into this? Did you ask the Nebraska Secretary of State why 25,000 mail-in ballots across the state of Nebraska had happened, are missing? Do we still have that answer? That's my question to you this day. Do we have that answer? Furthermore, the nondisclosure agreement between election systems and software, where is your voice? I'm looking at you, Mr. Flower Day, because you've been on there for, you know, a while. There's a lot of accountability on the shoulders of those who have been here for a while. And your lack of action is going to affect your family. You know, when you're a grandfather, and we don't want this, we want freedom in our elections. We've lost our elections. You tell me why this wording here and talking about, "We can't find out the testing results." I'm going to bring to you, I want this to be your homework, source, master agreement number AR-2762, Election Systems and Software LLC. I believe this is still the current contract, if I'm wrong. But this is what I had, this is what someone brought to my attention about a year ago, and I said, "What is happening?" And this is where our counties can make a change, even where our Secretary of State is covering his head and not meeting with people in concerns, and where people can't get their cast vote records. I'm reading, I believe it's page 20. It says, "Not share, disseminate into the public realm the testing results or any other related information, and not indirectly publicize any media or public forum whatsoever, any information or materials on any opinions, conclusions, comments concerning the testing results." We cannot even know what's in those machines. It is time to go back to hand-counting ballot. That power is with you guys. We are going to understand, there will be no excuses. There are no excuses now with what is taking place in this county. And furthermore, the lack of action shows us, there's no excuse. And we're not going to accept these excuses. And we are going to hold you by the Constitution of the United States of America, by the Nebraska Constitution, in what we talk about, Article 1, Section 22. "All elections shall be free, and there shall be no hindrance or impediment to the right of a qualified voter to exercise the elective franchise." Right now, ESNS has more ideas of where our votes are being held, the software company of what they're working with, with Big Tech, and furthermore, more to come. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing then, we can proceed with the announcements, please.
Of course. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold budget hearings Tuesday, May 23, 2023, immediately following the Board of Commissioners meeting in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May 25, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May 30, 2023, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L-NK-TV. L-NK-TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L-NK-TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Next up, my half is reserved for executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of pending and potential litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest at 10 o'clock a.m.
Second cut.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
I move that we... Are you ready, my friend? I move that we come out of executive session at 10:07 a.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of executive session at 10:07 a.m. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.